I'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular school board meeting of the Northfield Public Schools. It's April 9th, 2012. Dr. Richardson, there are a couple items in the table file?
Couple of items in the table file, and those are personnel items. We have two appointments, and we have one resignation to report this evening.
Okay. Well, we will add that to the consent grouping as we move through the agenda. We are on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the district to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? No? All right. On to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet the minutes from our school board meeting on March 26th, 2012. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? With carries and...
Yeah, and a first and second.
And second by Jeff. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Announcements and recognition, and I saw you had quite a list.
I'd like three pages, so I will talk fast. But again, we'd like to congratulate a number of people tonight. First of all, congratulations to 8th grader Jack Morrison. He won this year's middle school Geography B in December. Qualified for the state Geography B by scoring as one of the top 100 participants in the National Geographic Society's written exam, and participated on March 30th in the state Geography B which was held on the campus of St. Cloud State University. We'd also like to congratulate our Community Services Division. They received a Southeastern Minnesota Arts Council, has approved the Community Services Division's grant request of $6,500 for expenses related to Books and Stars for 2012. Books and Stars is a partnership between the Northfield Public Schools Community Services Division and the Northfield Public Library to bring art and cultural experience in the community while promoting literacy and having library resources available. In the combination of seven live performances in various parks throughout the community, will be teamed with opportunity to check out library materials. Again, makes this a very valuable summertime event. Books and Stars will be held on Wednesday evenings beginning June the 6th, the first full week out of school. Just a reminder that Sibley's annual Beyond Words event, Sibley staff out there, do the appropriate wave, okay, will be this Thursday beginning Scott at 5:00. And again, always a fantastic opportunity to see the blending of arts and literacy. Greenville Park held its fourth annual evening of the arts last Tuesday. The event was meant not only to highlight student projects but also provide opportunity for students and parents to stop at stations throughout the school. They had a chance to make watercolor butterflies, origami, pen wraps, and get and make balloon animals. Evening also included performances by students in 5th grade orchestra, 5th grade choir, and Reader's Theater performed during the evening, and again was a collaboration between fine arts and classroom teachers. Also, our Bridgewater students participated in the annual spring break Read-a-Thon with prizes for all students who participated. Students who met their grade level goal received a Mini Murphy from Papa Murphy's Pizza. One student per grade level was selected to dine with the principal for lunch. The grade level class that read the most minutes earned a pizza party, compliments of Papa Murphy's, and those classes were Ms. Wizdorfs morning class, Senora Seifert's 1st grade class, Senora Born's 2nd grade class, Senora Larson's 3rd grade class, Mrs. Schuster's 4th grade class, and Mrs. Kohl's and Mr. Robb's 5th grade classes. Because out of all the minutes of reading, their classes were only 10 minutes apart in the total amount of reading, so they both were recognized. And again, thank you to the parish family at Papa Murphy's and their support for reading in our schools. Bridgewater will be celebrating the Earth Day on April the 20th. Again, a great opportunity for students to learn different ways to care for the earth. Also, a reminder that April 16th through 20th is severe weather awareness week, and we will be having tornado drills in each building on Thursday, April the 19th, giving students and staff a practice opportunity in terms of where they need to be in case of an actual tornado. And also, we would encourage families to be looking at that as a good time to be thinking about and planning for what they need to do at home in the case of severe weather. Also, would remind board members that Volunteer Appreciation Week is coming up on April 15th through 21st. If we think of the thousands of hours of volunteer support that we receive every year, I think we're very, very lucky to have their help every day. We'd like to thank our volunteers for that effort. Also, Administrative Professional Appreciation Week is April 22nd through the 28th, and again, thank you to all of the district administrative professionals for all that they do to keep the district running well. And then, I would like to share just a couple of other pieces, because I don't think we did so earlier. Would just like to let you know that our new Director of Buildings and Grounds, Paul Vell, is on duty and has been on duty for the past couple of weeks. Paul basically is, has a degree in Building Electric and Mechanical Maintenance. He's a Certified Facilities Management Administrator, has over 25 years of maintenance and supervisor experience. He was previously employed with Hennepin County as a Building Operations Manager with the responsibility for directing operations of nine different county properties, and prior to that he was a building engineer with the Elk River School District. So again, we want to welcome Paul, and I believe that he has settled in well. He comes in in the morning and isn't, doesn't have a cloud over his head, so life I think is good. Also, I told him we'll try to make sure he has more snow next year so we can get the full ambiance of coming in at the beginning of March. Also, would like to congratulate Ariana Beebe at Greenville Park. She was identified to do a, actually, a video presentation on Northfield Patch as well as an article that talks about the Spark Initiative. And again, this is an initiative that we've been working on with Greenville Park Elementary along with HCI. It highlights students and really looks at what is the thing that sparks their interest. In her case, it's mathematics. And the entire video, she's doing math problems, tough math problems. Congratulations to Ariana. And then also, in front of you, you've got a piece from the U.S. Figure Skating website, which if you notice you get about halfway down, you'll see some very positive remarks that they have made about the work between the Community Services Division, Park and Rec areas, and the Northfield Skating School, and the ability to offer opportunities for figure skating in our community that previously had not been available. So, again, just a very, very positive piece about collaboration with Community Services. I believe that is everything I have right now.
All right. Board members, any other announcements? Julie?
I just wanted to, I recently attended the Dare Graduation Program at Sibley, which is the Drug Awareness and Resistance Education, and I just wanted to thank Sad Munro for taking our 5th graders through that program. He has clearly great passion and great energy for that program. Does an awesome job. And then thanks to Econo Foods who paid for the, donated the cake for the graduation ceremony. It's very well done.
Great. Anyone else? No? All right. We are on to the first item for discussion, which I believe is Sibley. So we have the Professional Learning Community Presentation, and Scott, it looks like you've got a whole entourage with you.
A whole cast, yes. And I'm just going to introduce those folks, but before I do, thank you for the PLC time. It is greatly appreciated, fully embraced by our Sibley staff, and what you're going to see this evening is our 1st grade team who is presenting to you, and, but at the same time, we are also presenting, you know, 10 or 15 minutes. Every grade level is going to be presenting to our, to our PTO. Some have presented already. These guys are up again tomorrow night at our PTO meeting, but we're trying to get out and share everything that's going on during that PLC process. To my left, we have Amanda Seager, Katie Shorma, Judy Vito, and Gretchen Heil, and they are the 1st grade team at Sibley. They're going to give you a brief intro of what you're going to see tonight, and then we're going to show you DVD that Amy Sieve from the middle school spent a lot of time on over the, over the last, what, probably six months? And then we will be around to answer any questions you have after you view the information.
My name is Katie Shorma, and I teach the 1st grade Compañeras class at Sibley. And first of all, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share what our PLC has been doing the past year. Amy came and began videoing us in October and started with videoing our, filming our meetings and for a couple of weeks, and then after we had really gotten into developing the flexible groups, we, she began then getting some footage from our classrooms. In the video, you will see footage from our meetings as well as flexible groups in word study and language arts and math flexible grouping. We want to emphasize how greatly we value our PLC time each week. Without it, we would not be able to execute flexible groups as we can. With the hours that we have, we can fully review the data that we collect and create the groups effectively, plan for them effectively, and then within them target specific struggles and enrichment support across, across all of the levels and abilities. And with the flexible groups, we can really effectively differentiate and find the kids where they're at and the academic levels that they're at, and push them forward from there. As a Compañeras teacher, I greatly value that time within the Doral Immersion Program with, for the English language support that it provides my students. With that, I would like to direct your attention to the screen as we present our PLCs in action.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read the SMART goal first, which begins with our reality section. Our reality is that all 1st grade students were administered the Words Their Way Spelling Inventory in August 2011. Each target area on the spelling inventory consists of seven feature points. Students scoring 0 to 5 of 7 in an area were identified as needing growth in that skill. The skills include initial and final consonants, short vowels, digraphs, blends, and long vowel patterns. The students work in a progression through these skills. 8% of students showed a deficit score in the phonemic awareness of initial and final consonant sounds. 16% of students showed a deficit score in the phonemic awareness of short vowel sounds. 45% of students showed a deficit in their phonemic awareness of blends and digraphs. 27% of students have met grade level proficiency in phonemic awareness and are currently developing their phonological awareness. Then that move on to our SMART goal, which is we will increase the identified target areas on the Words Their Way Primary Spelling Inventory so that 90% of 1st grade students will show growth by two or more feature points in his or her target area by January 2012.
So, he was one that I thought, well, he could move back to digraphs, but then when it comes to blends, he really has helped those.
But you're not moving him back to...
Digraphs.
You're moving him back to blends.
Correct.
Or blends and long vowel patterns, though, because I think that Katie is going to have to do two of them.
Yeah.
The first picture is "ship," so we all say "ship," and then you pull it up. We'll have the letters, she'll read it. Right, I'm going to put it, so now I know. I'm looking around, I see lots of S-Hs, so why don't you put it in the S-H? Yep, and you go up right, and then go to the S-H.
I think in our PLC time that one of our colleagues came up this Words Their Way, she had something she had just gone back and done with her reading certification, and we were able to pull this out, and we really liked how it really gave us a really fine-tuned picture of where the students are at. They're given 26 words to write to the best of their ability. They write the sounds that they hear in these words. And as we go through and analyze those lists, we can really see where each student has their individual needs. We have kids who are just beginning to learn their consonant sounds, and then we have other kids who are related into the long vowel sounds and the inflected endings and things. This really shows the wide progression of students that we have in 1st grade.
All right. You did a great job helping me sort of through your cards. Your next job is to take the sorts that you have in your notebook, and you are going to glue it in your notebook today. I have glue sticks here if you need that. Some of you have them in your desk. If you're from a different class, you'll need to come up here and get a glue stick. When you glue it into your notebook, it's going to look, hey look, it's going to look just like this. It'll have one row with all of the things that start with S.
PLCs have been extremely beneficial. And our 1st grade team here over the last few years, we've worked in the area of literacy. We've opened on word study, which depends on children, how they understand words, how we're going to put together, and how they work with words, which can really aid in their reading and in their writing. And we're taking the kid who's just learning his letter sound and giving him individualized attention or attention in a really small group, those kids who are really struggling, we have that, that lowest flex group or the flex group of those beginning consonants, we have, that is a smallest group, so we can really give them more attention. Also, in that flex group, students who are just beginning to know their, their consonant sounds or maybe in their short vowel sounds, in that lowest flex group, we have our literacy coach, Becky Gane, also coming in and working with students. So she and I currently are working with about 14 1st graders for 30 minutes, three days a week, and working on hitting them right where they're at in their development and working to push them forward. So they're getting some really intense instruction. And then in our higher flex groups, those kids who are really understand and have no vowel patterns, it's really challenging them as well. So I think one of the main benefits of the flex groups is that we're able to hit kids where they're at in their learning and really move to push them forward, taking the skill that they're at, the skill area that they're working on, and using word sorts in our flex groups, where the kids are taking that skill and taking either pictures of words and having to sort them into different columns and different categories, so they're really focusing in on the individual skill.
Are you ready? Okay. You would be managing maybe two different sorts.
Yeah, that's the main benefit of the rule of numbers.
And I'm going to be managing two different sorts as well. Because I'm going to take some kids to other vowels and inflected endings.
Right.
Because what I'm trying to do right now is divvy it up. If they have four in other, in the, in the long vowel pattern, most of them miss the O-A and the I-G-H.
Right.
So I'll start there with those kids and move them, and then for the kids who have none in long vowels, they're starting there, and I would start with that.
Another great thing is that students don't stay in the same flex groups all year, the flex groups. Some students that might be the appropriate group for them, but other students might be going in and out. And I think our flex groups are probably going to be changing three or four times this year, so we will go and reassess the children and then put them into the different groups, the group that's the most appropriate for them.
Group 1, U, I'm going to have a new sorts today. Last time we were students, we were sorting short A versus long A. Today, take a look at the group 1, what kinds of words, kind of vowel needs each in here that you're going to be sorting today. Do you know that? I, A, and... Math SMART goal for 2011, 2012 school year is as follows. In, our reality is, is that in September of 2011, all 1st grade students were administered administered the MWDA Primary Math Test. The national median RIT score for 1st grade at this time of the school year is 162.5. According to the data from this assessment, 41.6% of our students scored below the national median score for this time of the year, and 68.4% of our students scored at or above the national median score. So our SMART goal was to increase the overall RIT score on the primary math test so that 90% of all 1st graders are at or above the national median by June 2012. So to accomplish this goal, what we decided to do as 1st grade teachers is to, first of all, use our flex group time one day a week, to really meet the kids at the math strand that they needed to work on. So whether it was numbers and operations, whether it was geometry and measurement, we would try to work with that. I was also thinking, that would be a really good thing, because I've noticed with some of my kids, they don't get that, the one place is the same thing as the one digit. It's the same thing as a Q, is the, you know, is the same thing as...
Right, that's all represented.
That's all the same thing. And I think in math, we have that a lot, where you use a lot of different vocabulary that means the same thing, and for those kids, that's what I've just noticed with some of my kids that are kind of suffering now.
So when I'm saying 10 place, I'm talking about the 10 digit, but I'm also talking about how many ones there are. So all of those things, when your teacher's saying that or a question on a, on a test, asked to that, that's what it's asking you for, okay?
Well, the other thing that I think would be really valuable if we could do is to continue to develop our SMART board math lessons, and if we're going to be enriching the, the flex groups and, you know, enriching our readiness or whatever options that we're going to be using for lectures, I think it'd be really valuable to have our math lessons. I think we could do that.
And have all of them. And all of these.
So who has circled the 10 place in the other number? Amanda? Hannah? Did she circle the right digit? Did she circle the right digit? Yeah!
Yeah, she did.
How many ones or how many tens are in 29? There are two.
And our flex groups, what we find that we really like about them is that we can differentiate the kids, and we can really hone in on skills that they need to work on while still teaching the same skills, so that when kids come back to our classroom, they can say, oh, we played a money game today, and everybody played a money game. It was just at that student level. So that's how we use our flex groups, and that's how we get to really what the kids need work on, whether it's enrichments or whether it's a challenge.
In our flex group, you can take three cards to make the biggest number, okay? You can take three cards. So instead of just taking two and making the biggest number, I'm going to take three. So I have a zero, a two, and a zero. What's the biggest number that I can make? 200. 200.
They get all of that. Like, we watched the Brain Pop play value, and it was very interesting to them, but then, you know, like they didn't, it's, I don't know, how do you make place value go to that height, you know? Because, well, I think we had...
But when you really have them take the number and break it down, so 356, 300 plus 55.
Right. And so we had to explore that, and then we had like five minutes, had a play game, or we were just like, quick do this! And so we did.
What if you do regrouping with place value? So like if you add 25 plus 36 plus 8. Right. Yeah. How many tens do you have?
If I have this number right here, and I underline the 8, what place is that in? What digit is that? Is that the one digit, the ten digit, or the hundred digit? Which place is that in? Is there a 10 place?
In January of 2012, our students again took the primary math test in math, and we had 75% meet the national median of 172.0. And comparing that to, to the fall score, we had 58% of our students that were at the national median. So we feel that our PLC time is very effective, being able to focus in on what our students need to know, and we feel that our flex group is also a time where we can really focus in on the specific skills that kids need to be successful in math. Another thing that we also do with our math flex groups is to give them exit lists so that they need the room. If we were some place value that day, we might have given them an exit list that might say, I'm thinking of a number that has a 1 in the 10 place and a 2 in the 1 place, and they would write that down. And then, we also use that as a form of assessment to make us look at what kids were successful with the skill that we taught that day, and what kids need to have extra practice. So during the week, their classroom teacher will work on them with that skill, and then, and potentially the next time we meet, the next Friday when we meet with our flex groups, we might also work on that skill again, or not, we may move on, it just depends on what we learn from our exit lists and that formative assessment piece.
Right, yeah. Of having this time, one hour a week set aside, we can get together with our colleagues and meet and talk about the students that we have this year, the individual students, where they are at, and we can work collaboratively to figure out what we can do to help them.
Yeah, we should do that. Yeah, and use the data. Action is for next meeting, and planning for math plus groups are very important for our community. And...
And then maybe even just kind of touch bases, we'll, we'll call it...
And then maybe even just kind of touch bases will better explain the problem.
All right, well, that's all, folks. I'd like to call the four of them up here, and they will answer any questions that you might have, and it'll also provide me with a photo opportunity, because I'm standing in front of the podium. So come on up.
All right, board members, any questions or comments? Carrie?
Well, I want to thank you for the report. It was really interesting to see both reading and math in the same PLC presentation. Often, we see one or the other, so it was exciting to see them both. I particularly love the way, I think it was Judy described, the differentiation where when the kids come back to class, that everybody played a money game today. And so you don't have that, all kind of the social things that go along with differentiation. I think that's really, says that we've really come to a very good place where we can differentiate doing the same kind of activity, and so that, I just wanted to compliment you on that. And then, I guess this actually is another question for Judy. When you were doing, I think it was so's literacy, and you were saying, group one, you'll be doing this. Are you actually in your flex group? You have multiple groups going?
I do.
So, so it's not just four flex groups? It's, and do the rest of you as well sometimes?
Sometimes, yeah.
So, so really, we're really spreading out the differentiation.
Correct.
Does that happen often?
You know, last year it did not.
Okay.
And this year, the way that the kids came in with their abilities and what they knew how to do, and what sounds and letters they were working with, it was really apparent that it needed to happen. So some kids were just taking off and knowing that they needed to have a silent E at the end, and other kids already knew the vowel pairs and knew the silent E, and so we really needed to move them on to the other vowel, long vowel sounds, like that IGH or the, or just like the AUGHT, those types of combinations of letters.
I think also, we've been doing this a few years now, so we're more comfortable with it, and we feel more ready to jump in and do those kinds of things.
Right.
Well, and I think that also speaks to the fact that these PLCs, you're working with the students you have right now. It's not just, oh, first graders, you need four groups. It's, these first graders need this many groups for whatever purpose, and that's exciting too. Thank you.
The board members? Julie?
I just wanted to thank you guys too. It's so well done, and you obviously are working very well together. And it's so interesting when PLC presentations are done, and how beneficial flex groups are, because the range of students is just amazing in terms of their ability, and Gretchen used to talk to that. And it was really interesting to see the use of smart boards and how that facilitates. And I was really, I thought it was really great the way you're doing like a little formative assessment as soon as that flex group ends. I mean, it's really well done. Thank you.
Well, Amy, you have got really good. That was her challenge with the video camera.
Anyone else?
Well, I want to thank you. I had one question, this was just so fabulous thing first grade, because as you said, there's this huge range, and at their early years, it's so critical to meet them. How does the, how does working in the PLC and your flex groupings, how does that influence your other practice of teaching? Because this is, we're just seeing the snapshot of when you get to do the flex groupings.
Actually, Gretchen, well, we, this is interesting, because we just started doing something a little bit new in our regular math time. We took, we've been taking a look at the units and giving pre-test. Actually, I think we just did that for the last unit, for the first time, and then differentiating based on how they did in their pre-test. And so, the way that it looked this time was, I have three of my students during our regular math time going into Gretchen's room, because that's where their needs are, and then she's got a couple of kids coming into my room, because my class is getting better with their needs.
And the classes were pretty, there was a pretty widespread in the ability in our two classes, so we just took that data and just kind of made a little flip, and the kids are like, yay, it's cool! They're really excited about it, and it really is a much more appropriate fit place for all of those kids involved.
So I think that it is impacting our teaching in other ways, it's just, it's making us, I think, more flexible.
Well, in our initial, initially that pre-test, we had thought, okay, let's take this pre-test, and maybe we'll flex all of math. And then after looking at it, looking at our data, we thought, you know what, we really don't have to. We're pretty secure, except for these few little kids, and we were just able to move them.
I think it also affects, as I'm individually conferencing with students, knowing which flex group they're in and which work pattern they're working on, then I can focus with, on that with them as I'm doing guided reading groups or conferencing individually with them. And so that really, I think, helps us hone in on what skills they need without having to take the time every week or every so often to test them ourselves, but the flex groups help support that and then help push us further within the individual conferencing too.
And then, this has all the other opportunities, kind of dovetail them with our PLCs with workshop and differentiation. No, I know that was the general topic, I'm not remembering the presenter, but from that, we could use some of that information, and then our academic coach, Tanya, will also kind of came up with this way to differentiate in our classrooms, so that you can during math time, basically work with two or three groups depending on what kids need. And I think when you kind of put that all together with PLCs as well, you really are able to work with all of that and meet the kids where they're at. So those, all of those pieces can fit together.
That's great. And you obviously work really well together as a team, so that's really exciting to see.
I would say, I am probably the youngest teacher of the group, but just being here, only a couple of years.
You need to be careful there. Maybe the least experienced, don't go into the younger group.
And looking, when I was looking for jobs in districts, PLCs was one of the biggest things that attracted me to the district. And I know when I was looking, you had just begun the process, and so it's been really exciting to be a part of it and to see how valuable, how so valuable they are to our students, and helping us become better at differentiating and reaching kids where they're at and pushing them forward.
Great. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Fabulous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have a second item for discussion report, and Dr. Richard.
Yes, I'm going to do this. Tom is not able to be with us tonight, so I will be kind of walking through this for you. And again, this is for information this evening as a report, but what we would like to do is to be able to come back at the next board meeting and ask for the board to take action. As these guys are finding out, I think the most powerful thing you heard tonight is the whole concept of differentiation tied to flex. And so the idea is by getting the differentiation training, and then being able to use that so that they can differentiate in their own classroom, and then on top of that, do a flex grouping opportunity, we're really starting to see the power of being able to take each kid where they are and helping them to go as far as they can. And you heard as much today about enrichment as you did about remediation, which again, I think is a powerful piece, and something we'll be talking to you again about in May as we talk about doing some rethinking of how we want to move forward with our differentiated, differentiation program for our high ability students. So again, it's, this, I think, really demonstrates how those two pieces can come together. And we did have, I think, a really good presenter this fall with Diane Hecox, who really was able to reach out to elementary teachers and give them some great strategies for how to address this. And we're very fortunate, she happens to be fairly local, so we're able to get her to come out and do day-long presentations. Okay, as far as Tom's piece in terms of Activity Advisory Committee, I guess the first thing I want to say to people is we are not talking about proposing any increase in activity fees for next year. We promised people when we went through the levy process last fall that we wouldn't be looking at doing any kind of an activity fee increase, and so that isn't on the table. What is on the table, however, is the advisory, Activities Advisory Committee has really been discussing and researching about the administration of the waiver process for fees, especially in working with students on free or reduced lunch, or students that have other kinds of financial hardships. And in the current setting, we basically have been waiving 100% of the fees for those individuals. What the Activities Advisory Committee is recommending, doing some rethinking about this as we move forward into the fall of 2012. And what they're really looking at doing is trying to think about a model that more closely follows what occurs in terms of the fee structure for the curricular program at the middle school and high school, and also the fee structure that we use with our community services program. And the idea being that when a student is involved in an extracurricular activity, it's important for that student and their family to have some commitment to the activity. And part of having commitment to the activity is having that sense that they have put some dollars into the process, and that because of that, it's, they have a commitment to move forward. The proposal really is to take a look at asking that students who qualify for free meals at this point would be asked to pay 20% of the total cost of any activity that they enroll in. If they're on reduced price meals, they'd be asked to pay 40% of the total cost of the activity. And for students who don't currently qualify for free and reduced, but may have a temporary financial hardship, maybe a parent has lost a job, or there's been some kind of natural disaster, or there's been a fire in the home, or a number of other things, the concept would be that they could fill out an application for scholarship, and if granted, again, it could have the fees reduced, but no less than 20% of the activity fee for that particular activity. You'll see on the backside of the materials, you can see how that impacts students, and you'll see that in most cases for kind of the majority of the activities that we have, where you're looking at a full athletic fee at the high school, somewhere in the $150 to $170 range, that then a student that's on a free meal plan at this point would pay about $31 to $34. Someone on a reduced meal plan would pay about $62 to $69. And again, the same impact would occur at the middle school, where full fees are, you know, in the $70 to $90 range. So with a free meal reduction, it would be down to 18 or 14, or reduced meal would be down to 36 and 26. Again, I think the desire of the Activities Advisory Committee is to provide the ability for everyone to have a commitment to the activity that they are involved in. And again, we see this as being important because it does, I think, help students and their parents to be more actively involved in the program, to not feel as though, you know, I'm just in this, but I'm not really paying anything to be involved. The other thing I think is important is for people to understand, and for the board to understand, that a, you know, the, really the total cost of the scholarshiping that we've been doing for the last several years has been borne by the booster clubs and by some generous donations of individuals when they, they actually put more on the activity fee check than the actual cost of the activity for their children. And while I think the booster club is very willing to support the scholarshiping process, what we've seen over the last several years is continuing increase in the cost of that scholarshiping to the booster club, and then having then an impact of making it more difficult for the booster club to fund the activities that they want to fund, or to expand to the number of kids that may actually need some additional support. So again, our hope is for the board to consider strongly the idea of making a modification in the waiver process, providing either a 20 or 40 dollars, or, excuse me, 20% or 40% payment by students who qualify for free or reduced meals, and basically also offer the opportunity for those folks that are in a temporary financial hardship to be able to be granted a scholarship, but again, at no more than a reduction to 20% of the actual cost. The advisory council or committee basically voted unanimously to recommend these to you. And again, as I said, the format for these aligns very, very closely to what we're currently doing for curricular activities at the high school and middle school, and also what we're doing with community services programs for which individuals are signing up. Questions that I can answer for you?
Board members? Carrie?
The family limit, the group that has reduced amount, does the family limit also have a 20% limit and a 40% limit?
Although it's not mentioned here, my sense is there would have to be a similar adjustment to the total family limit. Yeah. And I'll work with Tom to make sure that that gets added into the information. But yeah, it would only make sense that if we're looking at 20 or 40% in terms of the individual activity, we'd need to look at a similar reduction in what the family limit amount would be for students on free and reduced lunch for that situation. I just don't think that's something they thought to put down here, but that would need to be addressed.
John?
Is there, is there an estimate of the economic impact, or is it because this is really, to a great extent, replacing some funds that are coming from the booster club? This is really sort of reverberating neutral to the district?
Yeah, because there wouldn't have been costs in the past for the district, because the district is not paying for scholarships right now. The booster club, basically, and again, donations that are coming in from individuals who are paying activity fields, fees, covering 100% of this. What this allows, however, is for more kids to be covered, if they need to be. And again, we're seeing unfortunately, a growing number of students that are coming to us with these needs, and it allows the booster club also to provide support for other projects that they are working on in terms of co-curricular programming in the district. Because they do put a significant amount of money back into the co-curricular program, not only for the scholarships, but also for things like uniforms and additional equipment and other kinds of pieces that occur each year as part of their efforts as a booster club.
Other questions? One more from Carrie?
Actually, two. Okay. Is this comparable to what other districts do?
What, what we've taken a look at is kind of where districts are going, and what we have seen is that over the last several years, that we have seen a lot of districts who've moved from where we were before are now moving to partially covering. And so, the number of districts that basically are doing 100% covering of looking at districts that are similar in size and makeup to ours has shrunken significantly. If we take a look at districts around us that are doing a partial covering, New Prague, Lakeville, Austin, Chaska-Chanhasen, Albert Lee, Faribault, all have a similar partial covering. We have a few districts that are still doing full. In our area, basically Shakopee, Hastings, and Rochester would be the only ones that are still running full. That would be south of the river, of the Minnesota River.
And in those districts that are, that are doing that partial coverage, have they seen a reduction in participation?
That's one thing that I asked Tom to check in on, and his response to me was that in talking with the A.D.s in those districts, that they had not seen any significant reduction in participation of students. Which, which again, is important for us. And I think if you remember, we've had that discussion really every time too that we've raised co-curricular fees over the last several years, beginning with the significant raise we made six years ago in the, with the first. raise we made six years ago with the first major set of budget cuts. And the reality is, our numbers have gone up every year. We actually have more kids involved. And I think in many cases, it's because in comparison to co-curricular activities or sports opportunities that they, that students might try to go to that are outside of the school district, we are still the best bargain in town for the coaching, all the equipment, all the opportunities for competition, et cetera. All of the other programs cost a lot more.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else?
Julie. I wondered, Hannah, if you wanted to speak to what you've seen happen in community services with the same approach?
I would concur that we haven't seen a drop in participation. We've actually had bigger numbers in the last couple of years than we've ever had. One of the things we noticed, and I'm not sure how much this correlates, but we were having kids sign up for activities that they were getting at no cost because there was no expectation of them paying anything, and then they wouldn't show. And so that took some other child's place, because the class filled, there was waiting like, you know, and so put us in a very difficult position. We have not had any complaints. And we check in periodically with folks and say, you know, how's this working? And we modeled ours after advice we had gotten from the Community Action Center, who works with a lot of families.
I think, you know, the one other thing, and again, I think, kind of thinking from the Community Action Center perspective and so on, is I think there is some sense for some families that paying a small amount really puts it in a better situation, where they might say to their child, I'm not going to do this if it's a handout, but I will do it if we have to pay something to be involved. And, you know, I think it's just a part of kind of basic dignity and whatever for these families to actually pay a portion of that. And again, in relationship to what they can afford to pay right now.
This is my committee, and so we did kind of model a little bit after Community Ed and kind of do the similar things of what you're doing, and address, you know, one of the things about fees and then participation and comparing all the other school districts and stuff. I think this is pretty fair and reasonable what we came up with.
Thanks, John. Noel?
I like the idea that Dr. Richardson spoke to, that it really provides an investment and ownership, which is really important. I think that's an opportunity that is important to demonstrate at this age.
Well, board members, this was just an item for information for tonight and for questioning. I think I really appreciate Tom's looking out for how can we, we've got a limited set of funds, and the needs of most students, and thinking through that. So will this be coming up in a...
Will be coming up at the next regular board meeting as an action item for your approval. And again, the purpose there is so that Tom has plenty of time to get this advertised to families, that families can be prepared before they begin paying activity fees for fall of 2012, '15.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. We have one item for individual action, and that is the resolution discontinuing and reducing educational programs and positions. And this piece is not tied to specific staff people, I understand? This is looking at based on the scheduling and being kind of ahead of the game at the middle school and high school? These are the best guess estimates going forward?
Correct. At this point, the difference between this year and previous years, if you think about it, is that the high school and middle school were just finishing up scheduling right now. This year, and again, this was in response to going through budget cutting on at least three different occasions, and principals feeling they were really struggling to know, you know, what is my FTE need at a time when we needed to have a budget approved in March, and they might not be completely finished with the process. So they really have made a conscious decision to move the effort up, again, approximately a month and a half. And so because of that, you'll see that in comparison to the last few years, where we typically had maybe a list of seven or eight different possible reductions, the sense here is that these two reductions do reflect the accurate data in terms of, again, student-driven scheduling in these two areas. What I would also share with you is a little bit about both of these. At the middle school, the programming reduction at this point will be looking at rethinking and blending the current woods class into the modules of Project Lead the Way. And so the woods class in the traditional format is not going to be offered as a separate class, but all of the Project Lead the Way programming, both groups, will be in place going forward so that students will have everything they need if they choose to move into the secondary level and continue in Project Lead the Way in terms of the high school programming. So, and this was really something that was worked through with Mr. Biggert in terms of thinking about what made the most sense, and I think his feeling was that this might be the right time to begin to sunset the traditional woods class and move to... Although the clock, the clock may appear. You may see clocks and skateboards and some other things that will still be done that are woods-oriented, but the projects and the activities are really going to move much more in terms of understanding the process of creating this project, and how that ties into, again, math and science skills, and really focusing on the process of actual creation of a finished product. In terms of the business reduction at the high school, the situation that we have there is that, especially over the last several years, we've continued to see growth in terms of our core academic programming, A.P. courses, other pieces, and business has been an area where we have seen some continuing reduction in interest. What we do have is, at this point, two staff members that are in the business education department, and one is basically part-time at the middle school, where they work with keyboarding directly, and the other part at the high school, the other is totally at the high school. Each one has specific courses that they are, that are unique to them. And so those courses will continue to be taught by the individual who has created that course and has built the skill set, and a kind of a bobbling in terms of that piece. With Karen, it's accounting and law programming. With Julie, it's web design, 3D animation, and so on. There are other classes, however, that both of them have interchangeably taught over the years. That'll be where we will be looking at making that reduction. And what we'll also be sharing with you as we move forward, and identify specifically the personnel as we move forward, will be we also have a strategy to help support and make sure that we're able to overall maintain that staff in a different way. And I'll share more about that when we get to that point in time. But that's basically the sum total of the discontinuation. And again, I'm pleased that the middle school and high school have chosen to take a very proactive effort in terms of trying to get this done ahead of time, because I think it does, it really eliminates all of the angst and the feelings that people have about, well, gee, you know, is my position going to be reduced, or whatever? And when there's a whole list that they see here, then you have people who, in the end, we know there's no, ends up being no reduction in the program. We're now down to where really the pieces are pretty clear-cut, and the teachers involved have had a discussion with the administrators involved. So that's basically the piece. And again, as administration, we would recommend that you would approve this resolution with the discontinuing and reducing of these programs' positions.
Okay. Question. Can you talk a little bit about, in your experience in K-12, and the function that it should have or has had for industrial technology and business education? You know, to me, it seems like, you know, hopefully, people would have an interest in business education, and more people would get into business, therefore, we'd have a stronger economy. So do you see in your mind, or in statistics that are out there, you know, what has been the trends, and what function should K-12 play in those two roles?
Okay. I think what you've seen, Jeff, and especially if you think about just the last decade, what's been the focus of the high-stakes testing? What has been the focus of No Child Left Behind? What has been the focus in terms of school operations? And it has really been the impact in terms of focus on reading and literacy, on mathematics, and on science. Those are the three areas where we have high-stakes tests that kids take, especially in reading and literacy. Those tests actually, in the end, can determine whether a kid gets to graduate or not. We've also seen the state move in and expand and increase the requirements in terms of the basic academic program, especially in the area of mathematics. We're now looking at every child needing to complete Algebra II before they graduate from high school. Significantly different from just a few years ago, where a student might be able to take a couple of general mathematics courses or consumer math courses and be able to graduate. So to get to Algebra II, they've got to go through Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II in terms of the process. So what we've seen is an increase in the number of required academic courses, which really makes it more difficult, because the electives then are much more competitive than they've been. I think the other thing, as a district, what you've also seen is our focus on academic programming for college and career readiness, which has basically pushed many more opportunities for advanced placement classes, for foreign languages. Again, higher levels of math and science courses, often a couple courses, kind of above and beyond what most other districts even offer. And so I think what you're finding is many more kids who take that college path. I think the good thing with what we've seen with the electives over the last few years is a real effort on the part of the teachers in those areas to really rethink what their courses are going to be like. If you think about, again, middle school going into high school industrial tech, just a few years ago, it was basically the traditional, what you probably had in high school, where maybe it was a shop class, or what I had, industrial arts, you know, the spice rack and a few other things, or soldered funnel, and hopefully, the funnel held enough water that I could get whatever I was funneling into the jar. We've really seen that move, and if you've seen what Mark has done and Tim has done in terms of the Project Lead the Way, we're really into looking at the technology, we're looking at the kinds of skills the technicians are going to need in the 21st century. So we're looking at CAD drafting, we're looking at robotics, we're looking at CNC computer numerated systems and whatever to support kids, and kids are learning to use those skills effectively. And I think we've actually drawn some kids back into the program that previously would not have gone near industrial technology with a 10-foot ball, because of the fact that they can see the ties to engineering and the ties to science. In terms of the business services, as I mentioned, you know, where there are the traditional accounting programming and so on, we're also seeing, Julie, with programs like web design, which is very popular, and 3D animation, that's very popular. So what they're doing is they are reimagining and recreating their curriculum to match the needs of kids. And, you know, while the numbers of kids are still smaller than what we're getting in the core academic program, I really think that the teachers involved have really tried to refocus themselves. If you think about the FACS program, they are really looking at the culinary arts. And if you go past the door down here on the way out, you'll see, you know, baking and pastries and whatever. So it's really focused on things that are career readiness, or readiness to go on to the Court in Blue Institute, or to some other post-secondary activity, and be able to be a very competitive student in terms of those programs. So I guess it's twofold. I'd say you're seeing a reforming of the existing traditional elective courses, really focusing on science, technology, career readiness, and so on. And so I think the numbers aren't dropping precipitously. But at the same time, there's many more requirements in terms of the core academics, and those are going to draw kids away, because a student who needs to get through Algebra II may have to take that in some pieces in order to get it done, may take more than a year to complete all the math that they need to get to really reach that Algebra II level. But because that's a state requirement, that has to happen, and that may replace the ability to get to some of the electives that the kids would like to get to. So I think it's both pieces together. It's both an expansion of the academic core, and it's a reforming of what really is involved in the elective program. That was like the 75 second question. But you asked for it, so I wanted to give you the details.
So thank you, Dr. Richardson, for giving us the kind of the background and the vision behind this. And then, you know, it's really helpful to have that scheduling done so early, so that we can look at these things sooner. So we have the superintendent's recommendation to approve the resolution discontinuing and reducing educational programs and positions, as you see before you. Motion by Noel?
I approve the recommendation.
Okay. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Second by John. All right. Any further discussion or further question? No? All right. All those in favor of approving the resolution?
Yes.
Oh, oh, yes, we will call this right into the resolution. Okay.
Stratton?
Aye.
Quinale?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Maple?
Aye.
Blossom?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. We are now ready to move on to the items in the consent grouping, and as Dr. Richardson mentioned, there were a few additional personnel items that are included. And we heard in a very thorough report from the charter school contract at a previous board meeting, so anything that anyone wishes to pull from the consent grouping? All right. Motion to approve the consent grouping?
So what?
Moved by Ann.
Second.
Seconded by Carrie. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I would just add an additional note for the board. In terms of the charter school contract, Ryan and I have had a chance to sit down and work through the details. We've made some modifications, which bring that contract kind of up to date with some changes in terms of the structure of their board, and also looking at some of the other pieces where we wanted to make sure we were in line with the most recent statutes from the state. What we do know is that in a very different situation than what we had even just a year ago, we are now back to having a charter school department that actually has some people in it. And last year, when we sent in the charter school contract for Prairie Creek, we never heard anything back. And I finally called them in the middle of the summer and said, you know, you did get it, didn't you? You've reviewed it. Well, no, we didn't review it, but it's on file, and they're four years ago. Now they basically have hired a new director for that particular department. They've continued some staff that have been in place, who've been solid folks to work with, but they now actually have a department. And they also have a lawyer that's been attached to that department. So the one thing that I would say to you, and Ryan and I have talked about this, is we may send this in, and we may get a note back saying, no, we need to have you modify this section, et cetera. If we do, that's why we want to do it now, so that we can bring that... If we do, that's why we want to do it now, so that we can bring that back to you to make any modifications that we need to make. But we believe that the contract is very much in line with what the state is requiring. We think it has all the components. What I know from history is when you hire somebody or you assign somebody to a department and their job is to be, and this is probably, and I have two attorneys here, but that part of their job is reviewing the contracts to make sure that all the detail is correct. They may find some detail that they don't like. And so just to be aware, if that happens, understand that the contract a year ago would have gone through with no questions, and this year it may get some adjustments. But just to be aware that that's the case.
You may be describing bureaucrats generally and not lawyers.
And not lawyers, in the purest sense. Thank you. Thank you, John. I appreciate your appropriate defense.
Very good. Items for information, board members, you'll see in your packet that you received a revision to policy 514, the bullying prohibition. This is just an item for information for you to look through. We are, we'll be taking action on it at the April 23 board meeting. And basically, it's being able to clearly articulate what are the components of bullying. You'll also have in your packet the enrollment report from April 1, as well as the attendance from spring parent-teacher conferences, and...
I might just share just a little bit in terms of the bullying modification. The majority of the policy is just as it has been. And I think the piece of the policy that cabinet in general came back to us and said, "Please rethink and relook at this," was the specifics around the definition of bullying. And I think the concern was that in the definition of bullying, we had some situations where the action wasn't really bullying. And I think the idea in terms of doing this revision of definition, they are looking very strongly at a program called Olweus. It's spelled O-L-W-E-U-S, pronounced Olweus. And basically, this program is out of Clemson University, but it has been identified as a model program by the Office of Juvenile Justice and Prevention, Substance Abuse Mental Health Services from the Department of Health and Human Services, US Department of Education, a number of other entities, as being a model program. And it really focuses on, again, the three core components that are identified in the document. The idea that in terms of bullying, that you're looking at, you're looking at, and let me just pull that so I won't get the exact wording for you, that bullying involves a pattern of behavior repeated over time. So a single event is typically not going to be a bullying event if it never happens again. And let me give you an example. Two students are playing tag on the playground, and one tags the other one too hard, and then the first student falls down. Is that bullying? They're both third graders. They have been friends and continue to be friends after that happened. Is that really a bullying incident? Probably not. But if that's happening every day or several times, then we're into a situation that really in the Olweus definition comes back to bullying. It also involves unwanted negative action, and that could be both verbal or physical. And the third piece, it involves an imbalance of power or strength. So it really is an individual who is seen in a stronger position against someone who's in a weaker position and may not feel that they're able to defend themselves. So I think the purpose of this is to help to clarify for parents and students with greater clarity what is bullying, and making sure, again, that we address it in all the, you know, we've not changed any of the actions that will be taken in terms of the investigation, in terms of the discipline, et cetera. But we just want to make sure that it's really clear to folks that these concepts need to be in place for bullying to have taken place. And I think it was a good response from our building principals, saying, "As we're looking at this, we're seeing some situations where, again, a single act or an act or something that really previously would have been described as a fight or teasing between two kids of equal power, were being perceived as these are bullying incidents." And so I think that the purpose with this revision in the language is to try to produce that greater clarity, to help, again, students understand, staff understand, and parents understand when bullying is actually occurring. And again, the data on this from Olweus is very strong. Again, at the university level, at the federal level, Hazelton, here in Minnesota, endorses this program and has really been working to see this program be implemented in terms of school districts in Minnesota. And so I think we feel very comfortable that the language that's being proposed will make it much clearer for people and much more understandable for what that definition is. So that's really the purpose of this. And again, when you and I talk, I think what we kind of looked at was, this doesn't change a significant amount of the policy. We're definitely, you know, if the board feels the need to go back and have the policy committee review it, that would be fine. But we also think that because of the fact that we're not modifying a big part of this, that this may be like several other policies where we've done small parts of the revision, that this one may be one that we can do effectively as a full board.
Right. And that, you know, if it's a fight, there's certainly things within the policy for a fight.
Yes. And in fact, the reality is, if you really look at the bullying disciplinary actions and a fight disciplinary actions, usually a fight has a much higher level of discipline immediately than a bullying incident. So, and as well it should, because in that situation, typically, if it's really a fight, you've got, you know, blows being exchanged by two students, you may have one or more of the students being hurt. That really does immediately rise on the first occasion to a different level than something that might be a bullying incident.
So thank you. And board members, please look through this, and we'll have an opportunity to discuss it at our next board meeting. And I'd also invite you to look through this, spring parent-teacher conferences, it's really encouraging the elementary schools, the attendance has markedly gone up, which is fabulous. And then all the middle school events that have happened. Future meetings. Monday, April 23 is our next meeting, and we have a Monday, 14th. And while it's not on your memorandum here, please note that because Monday in May is Memorial Day, we will actually be meeting on a Tuesday for our final May meeting. So just thinking ahead, please mark your calendar. All right. Carrie?
I'm wondering if we can also mention the dates for the transformative technology public meeting. Chris or Matt, someone has to...
April, Saturday, April 21, from 10:00 a.m. to noon.
Yeah.
So everybody here should...
Somebody have a calendar for them. Saturday, April 21, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. And then we'll have our second session on April 24, which is a Tuesday, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. All of those are held at the Northfield Middle School Media Center. And there'll be a short presentation followed by quite a bit of interactive discussion.
Thank you.
No popcorn, though, sorry.
And Matt has already completed doing focus groups with both students and staff. We had an opportunity last Thursday to do a presentation to Rotary, and Matt was dazzling. I just kind of was the straight man. And then we also did a presentation on KYMN and did a half an hour presentation on technology.
Forty minutes.
So again, I think that the piece that we're trying to do is to make sure that everybody understands where we're moving and that we're moving with all deliberate speed, but we're also taking our time to really think through how best to look at this implementation and to make sure that we have staff on board so that they do what they need to do, and then that we have the sustainability to implement that technology, knowing that we can update that technology as it needs to be updated over the course of the next several decades.
And just one clarification. We met with two building staffs so far, similarly in the high school. We have Bridgewater scheduled for next week. We have Greenville Park on the docket for next week. We're meeting with ALC later this week, middle school tomorrow. So we're still working through the staff presentation, but we did complete the student focus groups, which is very cool.
Great. Thank you. We'll look forward to that. All right. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Remove.
By Noel?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.